I get, um.
I have a, like, my, I get, like, a pregnant female, kind of, you know what I mean? I get, like, that I got a very severe skin disc condition. I'm just, I'm just, I'm being effentrich. I am, but I'm.
Oh, come on, everybody's.
But it's also mostly to protect my skin. Okay, it's seven o'clock.
Good evening. Welcome to the McMinnville City Council meeting of Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. We are going to start this evening with a roll call, and I would ask our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, to do the.
Counselor Gary.
Present.
Counselor Minkie.
Present.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Present.
Counselor Payne.
Present.
Council President Garvin is just walking in. And interim Mayor Drabkin.
Here, thank you. Our meeting this evening offers accessibility services and Americans with Disabilities Act. This is a notice that Kent Taylor Civic Hall is accessible to persons with disabilities. A request for an interpreter for the hearing impaired or for other accommodations for persons with disabilities should be made at least 48 hours before the meeting to the city recorder at 503-435-5702, or claudia.sisneros@mcminnvilleoregon.gov. I see we have many members of our fire department here this evening, and I wonder if you'd be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd be willing to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
[inaudible].
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. Domestic violence is a complex and pervasive problem in our community that affects individuals across economic, racial, gender, sexual orientation, age, educational, religious, and societal lines. Domestic violence is not just physical; it can include emotional, mental, sexual, verbal, and financial abuse. Whereas, in a typical day, across the U.S. and its territories, nearly 75,000 victims of domestic violence sought services from domestic violence programs and shelters. That same day, more than 9,000 requests for services, including emergency shelter, housing, transportation, childcare, and legal representation, could not be provided because programs lacked the resources to meet survivors' needs. And whereas nationally, one in three women will be a victim of domestic or sexual violence at some point in her lifetime, and each day, an average of three women die at the hands of someone who claimed to love them. Approximately one in 10 men nationally experienced contact sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime, and reported some form of intimate partner violence. Domestic violence affects us all. Survivors are our family members, neighbors, coworkers, and friends. And whereas domestic violence is a leading cause of homelessness among families in the United States and is a significant contributing factor to unemployment and poverty, the need for safe housing continues to be rated as survivors' most urgent need. Nearly 8 million days of paid work each year is lost due to domestic violence issues, the equivalent of more than 32,000 full-time jobs. And whereas, although domestic violence can affect anyone, the impact is not uniform. Survivors from marginalized groups, including individuals with disabilities, members of the LGBTQ+ community, immigrants, older adults, and women of color experience disproportionate rates of domestic violence. These disproportionate impacts are often a direct result of systemic barriers, inequities, and inherent racism, sexism, homophobia, ableism, ageism, and other oppressions in our service systems. And whereas, the city of McMinnville joins with others across Oregon and the nation in supporting the victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in McMinnville. Now, therefore I, Remy Drabkin, interim mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby claim October 2022 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We urge all city of McMinnville community members to actively work towards the elimination of domestic violence by supporting and believing survivors and promoting healthy, respectful relations, relationships. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this 11th day of October 2022. I would now like to invite Deputy Fire Marshal Steve Cantella to present on the Fill the Boot initiative. Celebration fundraising effort.
Campaign.
Campaign, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council Mayor. Thank you for giving me a little bit of time to come out and just showcase an upcoming Fill the Boot campaign, fundraising event that we got coming up. Again, my name is Steve Cantella. I am the Deputy Fire Marshal here in town. I'm also a member of McMinnville Professional Firefighters Local 3099. This upcoming Friday and Saturday, members of McMinnville Professional Firefighters, joined with McMinnville Volunteer Association firefighters, will be collecting donations right here on the intersection of Second and Baker, Second and Adams, right in front of the fire station. So unfortunately, COVID, we haven't had this campaign in a couple of years now. So we're really looking forward to the opportunity to get back, engage the public, do some good work, and collect some money for a worthy organization. The Fill the Boot partnership between MDA and the International Association of Firefighters began in 1954, and since has raised more than $679 million, with over 300,000 firefighters participating nationwide. The MDA is the number-one voluntary health organization in the United States, serving people with muscular dystrophy, ALS, and other related diseases. For over 70 years, the MDA's mission is to empower people suffering from disease so that they can live a longer, more independent lives. The MDA's Fill the Boot campaign is an honored tradition, and we here at McMinnville firefighters, we're just proud, we're honored, we feel privileged that we can participate in it. Our recent events, over a weekend, we can raise $15,000. So we do good work here. We're just looking for another successful campaign, another opportunity to engage our public. And so that's it. If you see us out on the street corner this Friday and Saturday, feel free to honk, wave, stop by, we're gonna have some snacks and stuff out there. And of course, donate. That's what we need. Thank you.
Can you bring that boot over here now?
Excellent. I was hoping you'd say that.
I'll be sure to honk.
Thank you very much.
Give me some money later.
We'll now take comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide a public comment, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak and you are using Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature to request to speak, and once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. Or you may also send a chat directly to our city recorder, and we will announce you. Do we have anybody in the gallery signed up to make public comment this evening?
Not at the moment.
Do we have anybody on Zoom signed up to make public comment this evening?
Not at the moment.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the gallery that would like to make public comment this evening? Is there anybody on Zoom? Ah, yes, wonderful. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, City Council. I'm Rachel Flores. My address is 337 Southwest Howard Drive, McMinnville, Oregon, 97128. I wanted to just thank Mayor Drabkin for giving the proclamation on behalf of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I am here in my capacity as Development Director for Henderson House, which is the only nonprofit in Yamhill County that's dedicated to supporting survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. And we have many staff and board members in the gallery here to represent the support for that proclamation. I also wanted to invite you all on Thursday. Here at the Civic Plaza, we're going to be holding a candlelight vigil in honor of those we've lost to domestic violence. There will be an art display with silhouettes of real people, Oregonians, and their stories, authorized by family to share of those who were murdered by an abuser. So that will be a powerful display. We'll also have several speakers, among which Mayor Drabkin has agreed to be a part of that. Thank you. And we will be lighting some candles and honoring those memories.
Madam Mayor.
At 6:30 PM on Thursday, the 13th, this week.
That was my question.
Thank you, yes, Thursday, 6:30 PM here in Civic Plaza.
And at approximately 7:00 PM, when that concludes, we'll be inviting everyone who attends to walk a couple blocks down First Street to our advocacy center, where we will have an open house with refreshments.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments, and thank you all for the work that you do. It's very much appreciated. Do we have other members of the public that would like to make comment this evening? If not here, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make public comment? Okay, thank you. We'll go to our reports from councilors on their committee and board assignments. Start to my left this evening with Council President Adam Garvin.
I'll refer you to your packet about fire district stuff. We did have a role board meeting last week, and that resolution is in the packet tonight that we'll be voting on later. Airport Commission, we haven't met, but we did receive 18 applicants for our three positions, two full and one partial position. So we're gonna be conducting those interviews by the end of the month via Zoom, given the volume of applicants and the tight schedules of the mayor and myself and Willie, our airport manager, and getting all that working as one. So we should have some appointments for you, probably at our first November meeting would be our hope. YCOM did have a meeting today. I was tied up in a different meeting, so I wasn't able to attend that, but I will loop around with other board members and get you guys an update next meeting. And, yeah, because it's at McMinnville, has not met yet. I will update you during our next meeting on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gary.
Thank you. I'll be brief. There was no MIRAC meeting, and DEIAC meets Thursday. So, we, not that it's an official assignment, but the, I believe our next school, joint school board, city council meeting is booked for, in November, and looking forward to that, so.
Thank you. Counselor Chenoweth.
I have nothing to report. Parkway meets next week, as does MEVLC, so I'll bring it to you on the next go-round.
Thank you, Counselor Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. Historic Landmarks Committee met on September 29th and held a quasi-judicial hearing on the Gwendolyn Hotel, which is basically, would, the plan is to run from the current News Register building through the Wildwood Property Management building, and then the building where Hawaii 503 is located. It was a pretty lengthy hearing. Staff did an excellent job of giving a history of those properties, and we heard testimony from the project developer, which, on the background of their project, which was pretty interesting. And then I think the public testimony went probably three hours. I think it's something we're gonna expect to see back here at council, I would expect. Nothing to report this meeting on council governments.
Thank you, Counselor Payne.
Manscaped Review Board doesn't meet again until Wednesday, and Budget Committee hasn't met yet.
Thank you, Counselor Minkie.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. It is a light reporting evening. I want to restate something that was announced in here previously, but City Hall has been reopened. It's open Monday through Thursday from 9 until 4:00. And in addition, other events to keep on your calendars, that the city of McMinnville will be hosting the City-County Dinner in November. And that is the summation of my reports for this evening as well. City Manager Jeff Towery.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I apologize for my choice of eyewear tonight. I examine, I'm still a little bit light-sensitive tonight. It does not have anything to do with my lack of coolness factor. Just a reminder that I will be leaving tomorrow morning before the sun rises for the Vermont City Managers Association in partial representation of the community and ICMA as ICMA President. Jenny Berg will be your local point of contact. I will also remind you that I'll be in Tennessee in two weeks. There's a little-known rule that the fire chief and I are not allowed to be in the state of Tennessee in the same two-week window, so he had to come back today so I could leave two weeks from today. I will attend the next council meeting via Zoom, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. To our Finance Director Jennifer Quayre.
I have nothing to report this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Chief of Police Matt Scales. Thank you. To our Fire Chief Rich Leifert.
Mayor, Council, I have been in Tennessee for the last couple of weeks, and, but most of my work has been while I've gone on the consolidation work, and that we covered in the, in the report. Other than that, Mr. Towery, we did burn down a block of Gatlinburg while I was there, so I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. To City Recorder Claudia Sisneros.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind council, I sent out an email about dates for the city council goal-setting and retreat. Please make sure you respond to me by Friday. That way I can book the consultant that we're trying to get for that goal-setting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And going to members of our leadership team that are on Zoom, I'll start with interim City Attorney Walt Gowell.
Mayor, reporting tonight from Norman, Oklahoma, I can report that Zipley Fiber has submitted their acceptance of the franchise agreement that was passed by the council at the last council meeting. Other than that, I have nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. To our Public Works Director Anne Pagano.
Thank you, Mayor Drabkin. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
It's a little hard to hear the last time. I just wanted to mention that we are close to a recommendation for award for the consultant that will help us with the airport master plan, so I just wanted to let you all know that would be coming up pretty soon, and that's gonna be a pretty big undertaking for us and an exciting project, so I'm excited about that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. To our Parks and Rec Director Susan Muir.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing from me tonight.
Thank you. And Vicki Hedges. No? No.
Thanks. Nothing from me tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. And now we'll be moving into our consent agenda. Does any counselor have anybody, any item that they wish to have removed from the consent agenda? I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Payne, and a second from Counselor Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying nay. And the consent agenda has passed unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2022-63, a resolution authorizing submission of and supporting a petition for formation of a new fire district pursuant to ORS 198.800 to ORS 198, and a ballot measure for the formation of McMinnville Fire District. I'd like to call on our Fire Chief Rich Leifert to present.
Mayor and councilors, this item was tabled last, last meeting for an opportunity to have the rural district meet and pass their resolution. That resolution is in your packet, Resolution 2023-01. Summarizing that resolution, it is the transfer of all assets, as previously discussed throughout the feasibility statement and the resolution, to be identified for use with building a future substation, and there's specific language in their resolution, which we have modified our resolution and our petitions on page 45 and 62 in your handout to reflect the direct language that came out of their resolution. Also on page 45 and 62, Walt Gowell crafted language around the transfer of the fire station 100% as directed by the council into the new district. So both those documents and those pages have been modified to reflect the council's direction and the rural district's resolution that has passed.
Thank you, Chief. Does any member of council wish to have any discussion?
Also, Madam Mayor, apologize, the, Truman is here this evening with us also. He is one of the attorneys who's been working with us on the project. I don't have any questions of him, and I know Walt is on.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for being here. Does any member of council wish to have any discussion this evening?
I don't want to get into the weeds of things, but if the district is passed and this tax rate of $9.76 is, takes effect, then I would like to see the city services fee go away, but I'm just gonna put that out there, and we don't need to get into the weeds of it now, because it's not approved yet.
Does any counselor wish to have any further discussion? You didn't hear what Counselor Payne said. What counselor, in summary, and please correct me if I'm wrong, what Counselor Payne said is that if the fire district is approved, she would like to see a latter action that removes the city service charge if it goes in, once it's in effect. Would any other counselor like to have any further discussion? I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Peralta to approve Resolution Number 2022-63, and a second from Council President Adam Garvin. Is there any further council discussion at this time?
I just would like to say I would support you on that, Counselor Payne.
Is there any further council discussion at this time? All those who are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The resolution has passed unanimously. I would, now as we consider Resolution Number 2022-57, a resolution adopting a city service charge rates, and I'd like to call on our Finance Director Jennifer Quayre to present.
So, let's see here. What you have before you is the resolution, which is a component of the ordinance that was passed in September. So what this does is establish the rates for the city services charge that would go into effect once we're able to implement, likely in January. Let's see. The, the rate sheet that is, the staff recommendation sets the standard rate at $13, and the standard rate being for single-family dwellings. There is also included a lower rate for people who are in multifamily dwellings, a 25% discount, and then also for folks who qualify for low-income, low-income programs, they would be only paying 10% of the standard rate, or $1.30 a month. Other issues of note are that because of the, the original amount, we were looking at having nine months' worth of city services charge likely to be able to come into the current fiscal year, but due to various delays, the earliest it's likely to happen is in January. So there will be a budget gap of north of half a million dollars relative to the initial estimates that were associated with removing the American Rescue Plan Act dollars from the budget and replacing it with the city services charge. So despite the fact that this significant budget hole is generated by the delay, staff believes that long-term, it still makes sense to stick with the initial numbers that we were looking at. But there are, I have done some math, which are part of the appendices, that show you if you wanted to recoup the entire $1.6 million and change, we would need to increase by 50%, because six months as opposed to nine months, that $13. So the numbers are there, if that's something that folks are interested in discussing or So there has been significant discussion over the last six months, certainly even a year, so I won't go into more detail, but if there are questions, or if folks think that there are any particular components out of the staff report, or anything like that, that would be good to discuss as part of the public record, I'm happy to, to continue talking or just take questions, so.
Thank you very much. So on this item tonight, you'll see that there's a number of action or non-action items laid out before you. The, the middle action item is the staff recommendation, which is to continue moving this forward at the rate that's been discussed, and not to make any alterations at this time despite, despite delays. And I will open this up for council discussion. Counselor Peralta.
Yeah, I, I agree with the, the staff proposal not to increase the, the service fee to make up for the shortfall during the gap period that we have. It's already a pretty significant increase, and I do agree that over the long term, it will level out. I do have concerns about some of the comments about, you know, eliminating the service fee after the fire districting, simply because I don't think that the fire districting alone addresses the budget shortfall that we have going forward. So if we remove the, the service fee, then we need to look at making additional cuts to departments. So I think you need to keep that in mind. We got a lot of testimony before you came on the council from staff about the need for the additional revenue, because we've been essentially spending down money beyond what we've been taking in due to, you know, a lot of different factors, you know, that staff raised. So if we're gonna make those cuts, or if we're gonna do something like that, then we need to look at, at making significant cuts, so, just to keep that in mind.
Thank you, Counselor. Do any other counselors wish to make any comment or to have discussion this time? Counselor Chenoweth, and I will remind all members of council to please direct your questions and statements at me. That's not for you, that's in general. I didn't want to interrupt on the last, but I do want to remind everybody of that. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I, I didn't know that was a rule until the last little dust-up, so now that I know that, I will make a conscientious effort to do that. Mayor, I would, I would just like to say that, or interim mayor, I would just like to say that until we actually know what the dollars that are going to be coming to the city as a result of this redistricting, what those numbers really look like, I think it's premature to evaluate whether or not we're gonna need cuts, or whether those cuts are gonna be extensive cuts. Once we see those numbers, we'll have a much better idea, and then we can make an informed decision. There has been, through the six to nine months of this discussion, I have heard numbers ranging from 1.5 to $4 million that could be coming back to the city. So I, I would, would not want to jump to a conclusion without having all those facts before me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Do any other counselors wish to have discussion? And I would ask you, at this point, that we, we keep our discussion limited to the city service charge rates that are in front of us right now. Do any other counselors wish to have any additional? Yes, Counselor.
Hi, yeah, I just, I'm wondering how we're going to make up this shortfall. Are we going to be okay? Are we going to use some ARPA dollars? What are we planning to do here?
Well, the staff report does list out the, the levers that we have available to us. So what we, what we could be looking at are potential cost savings going through, because we did, we did budget in some vacancy savings anticipating, or already seeing what was beginning to unfold in the fire department and the police department. So there may be, I would not be surprised if there are more extensive vacancy savings, so that may be part of the solution. There are also the availability of moving, sliding ARPA dollars. That is an eligible use of the funds, although it's utilizing one-time revenues for ongoing carrying costs, which is not, is not the best match of revenue-to-expense choice to, to make, but it is available. And then we also are gonna be looking at our ending fund balance, and that, that may be at a better level, and I will have that information really soon, so.
Okay, so Mayor, personally, I would prefer, you know, to just leave it as it is. I prefer, I like the staff's recommendation tonight, and I guess we'll see what happens in the future at this point.
Thank you, Counselor. Council President Adam Garvin.
Jennifer, thanks for the great staff report. In there, you mentioned a mid-year review, and at that mid-year review, if it still looks like there's gonna be a shortfall, could you have some options in there for, for us to look at as far as closing that gap with six months of time instead of trying to do it at the last minute?
Absolutely, yes. We will, we will provide as many options on the, on the revenue side as well as the, the expense side to be able to address things, for sure.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I would like to stay at the 13.
Thank you. Counselor Gary.
Yeah, I would share my opinion for the continuing to be at $13, and just hope that, get it established and start bringing in money to sustain the services that we do have, and then work in that last six-month period, hopefully after the mid-year review, to figure out how we level out that year, that budget that we approved, and, and hope to hit, and then go from there.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Payne, do, do you want to add anything? Thank you. I'll just add one point of clarity, which is that when these, the vacancy savings that were just mentioned, just, we've had funded positions that we have not been able to fill. And so just as a, as a point of clarity. Okay, so I would now ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-57, option two.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Menke, and a second from Counselor Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The resolution has passed by four in favor and two opposed, and I will now adjourn the city council meeting at 7:35 PM.